...to be followed by the clear of allegiance. Father, we come to give you thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thanking you for this opportunity that we might meet to determine how to continue to move this town forward. As we meet and decide and make decisions, we ask for your guidance. We also ask for your blessings upon our first responders, our military men and women wherever they may be, as well as their families that some have left behind as they protect our freedom, our liberty, and our being. So we ask your blessings upon each of us and according to our needs and your ability to provide for our needs. In your precious name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for all your attendance and for your presence on this evening. Uh, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda? Mayor Pro Tem.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Oh, the woman Southern.
I'm readiness.
Okay, I'll state your unreadiness please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last minute, uh, meeting, we did, um, discuss Ms. Tucker's position when we came out of closed session, as well as her salary. But if I haven't overlooked it, but it's not in the, on the agenda. Uh, on page three, it says nine adjournment, and then after has eight coming out of closed session. So I think nine should have been, once we came out of closed session, we had a long discussion, and we spoke about her position as well as her salary. Because I think, Mr. Mayor, you requested that we get a overall pay list. So anyway, it's not on there.
Um, uh, Ms. Hudson, do you have those minutes?
Um.
And, and, or the voice according of our, of, of our discussion of the salary?
This is the work session, I mean, the meeting minutes from the last meeting. I have the closed session meeting minutes.
Okay, but the discussion of the salary and the compensation was done in open session?
Right.
Okay, do, do you have a?
No, so we would have to go back and add that because I did add it in the closed session, uh, minutes. So we'll have to go back and add it into this.
Okay, right. So they will be added?
Yes, sir.
And in the meantime, we can, uh, move on the, uh, approval of the, of the agenda. Yes, oh, the woman Cooper.
I think that should have gone under approval of consent items. And I think we still had to complete the approval of the agenda, this agenda.
Well, well, okay.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
What I would suggest is that the, um, that the minutes of September twenty eighth be approved with the amendments that were, um, that were raised by Miss Southern.
Yes.
And if that is appropriate, then, you know, I think it could be approved under that.
Okay. All right, let's, uh, go back to the approval of the agenda.
I see.
Okay, it's been moved in second.
I make a motion that we second the agenda with the proper, uh, correction to be added to the next agenda as well.
Right, we're just, uh, Mr. Alvin Southern, we're just on the approval of the agenda.
Right.
And so we would need just a motion to approve the agenda. And then, uh, the next item of approval of consent items, which would then have those corrections in that you raised.
That's not how I see it because when I go back and I read it, but if that's how you want it, but when I go back and I read it in the beginning, those are not, it's not a consent item.
No, no, I'm, I'm, we're, we're on the agenda here.
Right.
Okay, so we need to approve the agenda first, that's, that's the item. I think your correction was to the minutes of September twenty eighth meeting. Uh, and so those minutes are supposed to be approved.
So moved.
Okay.
You heard the motion, are, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of approval of the, of, of the agenda? Sign of aye?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved. Item four, the approval of consent items. Oh, the woman Southern? That's item four.
Well, I, I was not going to make the motion, but I'll make a motion with the correction.
What your light is still on though.
Okay, I make the motion with the correction, uh, to add Ms. Tucker's, Tucker's position as well as the salary, so our citizens can be aware of it as well in the, whatever we need to do, thank you.
Oh, the woman Jackson.
I was seconded motion.
I just been moving a second, those in favor sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, the woman Cooper.
Yes, um, on the, um, number seven on new business, uh, the wording of the, um, the actual motion for this, it, it doesn't really match what, uh, the actual motion was when you go back and listen to the meeting.
Where is your place?
I'm on the minute.
On page three.
On the minute. Item number seven?
Oh, okay, okay.
So the actual action doesn't match what the actual motion was. So it just needs to be clarified based on what the, uh, what was said at the meeting.
But there, there is a motion on the floor that's been seconded.
I'm in readiness.
Yeah, but, but, but I'm saying, it's still a motion on the, on the floor, so someone would have to address the pending motion on the floor. Even ungranted, it's still a meeting thing, other than during the discussion. But there is a motion on the floor that's been seconded. And so that's an upper down, unless Miss Southern would draw her motion, uh, in the second we have to second it.
Okay, I withdraw my motion so we can all be on one accord and make sure this is correct, so. What is you proposing, sir?
Well, it is, uh, the wording of the, uh, motion, uh, that when you look at, uh, this based on what was said in the meeting, they don't match.
Right.
And if you're going to put it in the permanent record, it should match what was said.
Right.
I, I, I am still looking for what you're pointing to.
On page three.
Um, on the board meetings, uh, the minutes for September twenty eighth.
September twenty, yes, okay.
Um, new business, item number seven.
Item seven, okay.
The, I, I, just that the wording for the motion, since this is going to go in the permanent record, it should match. What, exactly what was said at the meeting. So I'm just asking that they, when they, um, put it in the permanent record, that it matches what was the motion took before the floor.
Was the emotion to, to, uh, to approve a permanent change to start time with a regular board meeting to sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So what, what is, what is, what's the question?
It, but that's not, it, it was worded a little different at the meeting. And you, if you're making a motion, it has to match in the words of what was said.
No, I, I think that's a motion.
You can't add it, you repeat words.
Right, no, I mean, that's, that's fine, I mean, I don't have a problem, but I think that the, the motion really needs to reflect what the action taken is. I mean, it doesn't have to be, it was drafted or made or, uh, what's stated. I think that the, the action taken by the board was, they're seeking approval of the board to permanently change the start time of the regular board meeting to six o'clock. That was the motion?
Yes, but usually the record should reflect the exact motion that was put before the board. What the, I'm sorry.
Oh, the woman Jackson.
The motion that was put before the board last when he was at Mayor Donald, he did suggest that the, um, board meeting be changed from seven to six due to the winter months because of the time change in the winter months. And then I came back and said, that's not what we talked about, that it should be done because of the lengthy meetings and not the winter months. So it is actually what he said because that's the, he, he was the one that brought it up first. Excuse me, the mayor was the one that brought it up first, and that's the reason why he brought it up was because of the winter months.
But the motion was to change the meeting to six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Um, again, if you could just listen to the recording and make sure the motion is reflected as it was stated. That's, that's just proper procedure.
Verbatim, that's what.
Exactly, so whatever motion is put before the floor, it should always, the record should state exactly what was said.
And you have the voice according, is that correct? Okay, so, so then we will also do the, the minutes of the meeting as, uh, Mr. Charleston suggested that, uh, we make those corrections. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay?
And, 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 Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just want to just say that I, I don't think the requirement is that the, the written motion be verbatim what the motion was made, because if that were the case, the secretary would never have the ability, or the clerk would never have the ability to grammatically correct something or do anything. I think the whole idea under the rules is to make sure that substantively speaking, that the essence of the motion is captured in the minutes, because if this is the case, from time to time, folks may say things and, uh, disjoint sentences and all kinds of stuff. You're taking away the ability of the clerk to clearly reflect what happened. And all that will do is just bog the meetings down every time, you know, you have meetings that if one person used one word and somebody uses another word. I mean, I just, I, I think the clear thing is that, that, that the board only has to substant, substantively reflect the essence of what the motion was and what was voted on. That's it, it does not have to be verbatim, there's no rule that requires that. Otherwise, I think I'll caution you, if you do that, uh, the board risks being hung up at every meeting on what word was used, that word wasn't used, or this comma wasn't added, or something like that. It just substantively reflects what was stated, this is all that is required.
Thank you, Mr. Charleston. Did any woman sign, oh, the woman Southern?
Just for clarification, my wish was to add the discussion of the personnel when we came out of closed session. Has that been corrected during a motion? Because we kind of got stopped, so now I'm trying to figure out, was it in the motion with the consent item?
That correction, that correction.
Right.
Yes.
So therefore, would it be documented for us to see at a later time for the corrections for the next, uh, regular meeting?
Typically, what happens in the minute is once you make a correction, those, that correction is made and it's just recorded in the minutes. And you can go back in the minutes and see if there's a question about it, but they typically don't come back before the board to be approved again. Unless that's the policy, unless that's the policy of this board.
It'll come back because we've made this discussion, so everything that we discuss in a meeting, I think that.
No, no, that, that's not, that's not.
It'll be on the next agenda.
No ma'am, no ma'am, when you, when you're approving the minutes subject to the changes that you asked for?
No.
Because that's, that's your approval is based solely.
Right, so when she comes back and writes it.
And so they don't have to come back, the, the change is made. If that change does not reflect what you want, because you can go and look in the minutes, you can still bring it back and say that this was not corrected as per our meeting on October twelfth. But otherwise, you just, you don't keep bringing those minutes back.
No, you're not going to bring the minutes back, but I'm making a discussion, I'm talking today, you talking. Everybody's talking, so normally what happens is the minute taker will record what I spoke about, what Ms. Jackson, everybody, what they spoke about, and it's on, on the agenda, like we're talking now. They're going to come back and say, Mr. Charleston made a statement stating, duh, 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 duh. So that's what I'm questioning, normally it's, I understand what you're saying, it's going to be corrected in the minutes. But what I'm speaking about today is normally on the next agenda.
Yeah, I think, I think, and the, a, a suggestion is, is that typically you don't even want your minutes to be necessarily verbatim, they're supposed to summarize what happened, and you, you get to make a point, but it's, the minutes really, it's not a recitation of he said, she said, dah, 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 keep an accurate recording to reflect that, but it's really just a summary of the action being taken. But in this case, on this issue, I think that the substance of it is that there was something that you think is material, the board agreed, because it, it was a motion in a second, to correct that and to insert those changes into the minutes.
Yes, sir, that's what I'm accustomed to, that's all I'm asking.
Right, so that will be inserted into the minutes of, uh, of the September twenty eighth meeting, those changes, so it'll reflect the discussion.
Okay, just move on, I'll put a few minutes.
Please, please turn your light off, thank you. Uh, your question was, anyone sign, did anyone sign up for the, um?
No.
Okay, thank you. Let us move on to item six, new business case number twenty point one one nine, consideration of lot eleven dash thirteen. Ms. Jamie Walters.
The Republic Wireless.
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Walters, this is Ms. Hudson with the town of Spring Lake.
Yes.
Okay, we are ready for you, ma'am, thank you for joining us.
Okay, thank you. Um, we are here, and by here, I mean on the phone, uh, for case number twenty dash one one nine, consideration of lot eleven through thirteen, Spring Lake, request for a zero lot line subdivision review, Spring Lake subdivision ordinance, zoned R six, total acreage zero point six nine plus or minus acres, located at four zero five and four zero seven Lake Drive and one twenty seven and one twenty nine South Fourth Street. Submitted by Francis V. Thompson, who's the owner, and Mike Adams, surveyor. Uh, the property owner, uh, is requesting approval of the zero lot line subdivision. Um, the developer wants to take the four existing parcels, which already have three existing dwellings on them, and recombine the lot to make three lots, so going from four lots to thirty, um, with a zero lot line approval, so it would allow the existing structures to meet the setback requirement. Um, as it stands now, there are property lines running through a few structures, so this would help remedy that. Um, the parcels have two hundred feet of street frontage along Lake Avenue and a hundred and fifty of street frontage on South Fourth Street. Um, it, the site is served by the town of Spring Lake water and sewer. Um, county staff has no issues with the case, uh, we did not receive any comments from town staff as to if there are any issues on the town side, uh, but county staff has no issues with the case and would recommend that the board approve it. And I am available if anybody has any questions.
Oh, the woman Southern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, question, I'm looking at the map here, but where is near this property? What exactly, you said Lake and Fourth, but what's near this, these areas? I see this little box, but I'm not really understanding, uh.
It, there was an aerial photo included in the packet.
Page ten.
Um, it looks like it's just a few streets back from South Bragg Boulevard.
Right, in the, uh, blue, it says Eighth Street, and it's got a block, then it says subject property.
No, that's south, that's, that's, that looks like an S instead of an A.
Oh, south, okay, okay, south fourth street, okay.
If you look, uh, uh, below that, uh, that rectangle box, to the light blue, that's Lily and Black School.
Okay.
The building, the, uh, basketball court, and it looks like four school buses, uh, that are parked on the backside of the, uh, down at the bottom, that would be, uh, Zaxby, uh, before they were constructed.
So it's near that tobacco shop, when you come out and they've made it up, white, it used to be a crossway to come across. So if she's talking about Lake, then it's got to be where Zaxby's is, and, because she said Lake as well. So it's got to be right there where the tobacco station is, then you come out and you can't go across anymore.
No, the tobacco station is over to your, on this map is over to your left.
Okay, but she mentioned Lake.
Yeah, this is Lake Avenue, yeah, that is on the corner of Lake.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so the tobacco section is crossed, and that's Lake, and then that little church sits over here, that.
The, the big church?
The small church, and then it's Bobby Durham, realtor, is this what she's talking about? That's what, because she's saying Lake is involved in this, that's what I'm thinking.
It's, it's on the corner of Lake Avenue.
Right.
Right. So this building is on the corner of Lake Avenue and the street, which is South Fourth Street, behind Lily and Black Elementary School.
Right.
Now, if you look down in the, in the far right corner, that corner there is where Burger King used to be. And over to the right of that off the map is, uh, Ruby Tuesday, if you were looking, you know, for those, for the landmark.
Okay.
And, and I hate to, I, I don't like to really say it, but that, that corner right there is overgrown with a lot of stuff.
Right.
A lot of vegetation.
Right, I've been going to the boys several times.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm trying to just make sure I'm right before, okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Walters is waiting for a, a motion, well, I am waiting for a motion to comply with Ms. Walters. Mayor Pro Tem.
I move that we approve case number, uh, twenty dash one one nine, consideration of lot eleven dash thirteen, Spring Lake.
Oh, the woman Jackson.
I seconded motion.
It has been moved that we approve case number twenty dash one nineteen, consideration of lot eleven through thirteen. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, by the sign of nay? Okay, that's, thank you, Ms. Walters, is there, is there more?
Uh, no, sir, that is it, thank you, and y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Your light, all the women Southern, it's still on. Okay, item, uh, six B, as you all recall, uh, during the audit, uh, if, if, uh, when, when the audit results for twenty eighteen, or was it twenty nineteen, help me out, twenty nine, twenty eighteen?
Yes.
One of the recommendations from Mr. Grissom was that the board consider forming an audit committee. And you have in your packet on page twelve what, uh, some of the things we need to talk about, uh, in an attempt to form an audit committee if this board so desires. And these things are item one through eight, and I don't necessarily need to read them to you. I don't want to, to do that. But let's have a discussion about what an audit committee would look like before it is put in place. Oh, the woman Southern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think you bring it to the board, I think this is a great, uh, so it can be, continue to be transparent, citizens involved, and I like the recommendation, uh, that he had recommended. Um, and going through the eight, I don't know if you, if we're going to discuss it now or how many? Uh, do we bring it back at the regular meeting? Uh, do, because if we're going to discuss it, I'd like to take number three, and as our other, um, commission in the town.
Well, the, the hope is, we discuss it tonight, uh, adopt the, the, the motion, or, or make the motion, and proceed from there at our next meeting. This being a workshop, if, 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 uh, we can come to terms on these eight items and more, as the board deems appropriate, then we will be in a position to make the motion and move forward, because the, the next audit is due, uh, according to our timeline was the first part of November. And by the time we meet again, I'm sorry, the, uh, first part of December, but by the time we meet again, uh, November will already be here, well, you know, right around the corner, so to speak. And, and, and that gives us about a month to, to know what this review committee is going to do before we attempt to have the, uh, audit for the, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Is, is that the right year?
Yes, uh.
Yeah, okay, you're right, okay.
Okay, well, thank you, I think it's great, and I think it's great that you continue to bring it and would be transparent, and it, with taxpayer dollars and a citizen, so for the discussion, I'll just go ahead and say for the, uh, the minimum maximum number of members, I'd like to recommend that we have nine to be consistent with the other commissions that we have in Spring Lake.
All right, oh, the woman Jackson, I think you beat, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem to the, to the draw.
Yes, sir, I, I'd like some more clarity on the purpose of the audit committee. And exactly what are they going to be doing, what, um, what power they may have? I, I'd like more clar- clarification on that.
Mr. Gerald.
Yes, that's a good question, um, before you move forward with, um, recommending the members or anything like that, that's something, the powers of the audit committee, the, the, this current sitting board, needs to figure that out in this session, um, before they approve any boards.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's a good question, and I think since you brought that up, you might, it might be appropriate that you decide what the powers are going to be for that board.
Uh, also, um, like Mr. Gerald was saying, I also want to know the power of the board, I also want to know the requirements of the members that's going to be on the board. Um, what kind of, um, what am I looking for, experience that they may have in finance? Where they can see if something is right or wrong, um, the authority of them? Uh, I, I'd like to know all of that before, um, I say yes to this.
Yes, that's, that's another great point, um, just being a citizen, I, I think is not enough. I think you would need to be trained in government finance.
Mr. Mayor.
Y- yes, sir, uh, uh, may I get him, and then we're going to, uh, certainly depend upon your expertise to make this a, a, a smooth, uh, well-oiled operation. Uh, first it was Mayor Pro Tem and then all the woman Cooper.
So I'm not really sure what kind of value such a committee would add, because if we give them any kind of power, we're taking power that. we're taking power that voters gave to local representatives and giving it to an appointed board, and that would be a, um, kind of, uh, an abandonment of our own duties. And then if it has no powers whatsoever, then there's no point in having a committee in the first place. So I can't really understand why we need this.
Alderwoman Cooper, and then, uh, Mr. Mr. Charleston.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was looking at, I think Melissa emailed it, and this document kinda gives you an idea of the type of background for the people you'd be looking for. And I don't think they'd have to necessarily be members of the community. And then, I mean, we don't have to give them, you know, a, a lot of power. It's just, um, you know, we have different types, types of committee. We have the sustainable committee, um, you know, we have the recreation, um, department committee. We don't have to give them powers, it's just, uh, a, a committee that can look over our, our books and, and discuss findings with the auditors, because we have a lot of findings that we keep repeating in our, our, in our, um, audits every year. So I think this could just help us to tighten up some things.
Okay, uh, let's go to Mr. Charleston.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Typically, uh, when you have, uh, committees that, I, I would envision this more of a committee of this board. And I don't know if the board has committees now, but typically, uh, some, uh, town boards have subcommittees of the board that might deal with something. In other words, you may have a personnel committee of the Board of Audits that just deal with personnel issues, they bring it back to the board in a, in a form of recommendation, they've vetted, they've done all the work. And it still gets vetted at the board, they just voted on it, it's happening to the board. And I would envision possibly, I, I think this is probably just in the council that's out there. But a number of town boards, city councils, county commissions have committees of that height. Not made up necessarily of outsiders, I think, uh, Asheville, I just read this, Asheville may have chosen to put outsiders on there, uh, people that are not board members. But you don't have to, so, uh, a, a board of the committee might, uh, I mean, who's right? Committee of the Board of Aldermen might just have the responsibility of working with city staff to make sure that this stuff hits the timelines that are required, that, that this board is responsible for. I think it was raised in the LGC letter that, uh, that maybe you consider forming an audit committee. But it doesn't have to, uh, Mayor Protem, it doesn't have to be folks outside. It could just be a subcommittee within this committee. And a, a, a number of towns and, uh, cities do that, they may have a boards and commissions committee. And that group may vet resumes of people that they would like to see appointed to the, the city boards and commissions, but they bring it back to the full board, and the board has to vote on it. So whatever's recommended may not even get voted upon, you follow me? But it's just an apparatus, a mechanism to make sure that whatever, uh, policies have been established by this board are just tracked, for instance. Okay, and so, one of the things would be the case for sure, when you start looking back at the accomplishments that staff has with respect to the findings of the LGC, you start checking the box, you've done this, you've done this, you've done that, and so forth and so on. But I think, in this case, uh, ultimately, I think the key thing is to, uh, to make sure that, you know, some of the governance kinds of things, uh, have to do with any findings and recommendations are being addressed appropriately. And that the board itself doesn't get bogged down in meetings, dealing with some stuff that could have been worked through already by your committee and bring a recommendation back, for instance. But it's not, it doesn't have to be at all, uh, and this is the first time I've seen one, uh, one of these committees comprise that just citizens, typically what you'll see is just members of the board that are, are, are leading all these. Okay, so it might be, you know, two or three members of this board that form an audit committee. And they're just working with staff to make sure that the deadlines are being hit, so, and all those kinds of things. Whatever policy has to do with the audit, that, that this board as a unit establishes.
And, and one thing too, to add. Uh, honestly speaking, if there had been any kind of close monitoring, we would never have had that, uh, that bad press, when it was clearly pointed out that, uh, we had, uh, been late on our audit for something like five years. And I'm not saying that that would be the case with the president or finance manager, but I'm still recovering from the black eye that we got, when that hit the paper for five years running. Now, granted, some of us were not present during that time, but I think all of us are of the opinion, as they say, not on my watch, ever again. Now, we're thankful for that, uh, Ms. Tucker, and, and the help that she, that she got to do that last audit. She, she, she bailed out somebody who didn't do his job, and we're thankful. And this may not be a long, a glorious task, it may not require a hundred meetings to see where we are on our audit, but, uh, if, if anything, it's, as, as, uh, Mr. Charleston pointed out, uh, Lee Grissom gave us some things we could check on, the LGC gave us some things that we could use as a checklist, and those could be our guiding principles, they could be our, our path forward, so that at the end of the day, uh, particularly December of two thousand twenty, we will not have the other eye blackened, especially, uh, when January comes, and the news cycle is slow, and, and the newspaper wants something to write about. So it would be good for them to come to Spring Lake and talk about oops for six years in a row. Mr. Gerald.
Mayor, I'll be glad to come back with a proposal next week, now that I understand what the board is looking for.
Alderwoman Jackson.
Um, I just want to say, I like what Mr. Charleston said about the committee being among the board members. I like that, because, um, I don't think the newspaper's gonna come back in December, January for a sixth year, 'cause Ms. Gay worked too hard to get it right, and I don't think she gonna fall short for the sixth year. And I do also want to, while we throwing kudos out with the mess that we had, that, um, we can honestly say that, um, Alderwoman Sutherland, she was on it the whole entire time about checking, 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 checking. So, you know, with that being said, I like it being among the board members, um, doing that, 'cause she was on it the whole entire time. So, um, I like that part, if, if the committee can be among the board members, and we can have access to, um, Ms. Gay and talking about things and seeing things, I think that would be good. And I also like to record, make a recommendation that if it has to be two or three board members, I would love to have Ms., um, Alderwoman Sutherland to be one of those board members. That's, that's my recommendation on that.
And I, I guess, if there are three board members at one meeting, it would have to be called a, a meeting, so we can't have more than two board members.
All right, okay.
And a third person, if, if, you know, if that be the case.
An alternate, maybe?
Uh, I, an alternate board member? No, let's leave it with the two board members who own there, not mess with an alternate.
No, the reason why I said that was just in case one of the board members couldn't come, so you don't do alternate. I'm asking, 'cause I don't know.
I think, I think that, uh, uh, two things, I wanna respond to Ms. Jack Alderman, uh, Alderwoman Jackson. I think, uh, you, you hit it dead on the, on the numbers, uh, but the key thing is to make sure that this board has no surprises. Okay, that you gotta have to know all the time what's happening, not that, you know, the, the management that wouldn't bring that to you, but ultimately, if the Board of Aldermen gets the letters from the LGC, it's the Board of Aldermen that are responsible for the financial affairs of the town. And so, and then I think it also fosters better communication with, with management, along with issue, you'll understand what management needs to get it done, you know, what kind of, uh, you know, help they need, what kind of resources they need. So I just think, all in all, that the audit committee could be a very strong tool, and it was, it clicked, send a clear signal to the, the LGC and, and, and other folks that the Board of Aldermen takes this, uh, financial oversight very seriously. And, uh, and so, again, uh, let me look on that issue about the, I think it'll be limited to two members, so we'd call a meeting of the board.
Yes.
Okay, but I'll double shape that, working with Mr. Gerald, if that's okay? Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'll work with him, and, and we'll get something back to you guys, uh, right away. Because I think the, the, the responsibilities of the audit committees are fairly consistent across all the towns and cities. You know, it's, they, they make recommendations regarding the selection and retention of external auditors. They understand what the process is, if you guys ever decide you wanted a new set of auditors, you know, with the audit committee to develop and put management in RFP that goes out, rank them as a committee, make a recommendation to the board. Uh, in terms of whether or not you all will ever have an internal audit function, I don't know that, I mean, maybe one day you'll have that, an internal auditor, or have an internal audit function. And then the governance, risk, and internal controls, I mean, we've talked about that countless times, about spending levels and all kinds of things like that, that gets addressed through the audit committee. You know, and reviewing it, but the audit committee doesn't have any authority. All it does is make recommendations to this board. But the key thing is that it keeps key issues involving the financial affairs of the town in front of the Board of Aldermen at all times. Okay, so you'll have, you know, two members of your board that are all, like, focused like a laser beam on making sure that, that, you know, working with staff and making sure the information is coming back to you that you want.
Alderwoman Sutherland. It, it's off now, but it's on.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate everything being said, and a lot of times what I say, um, it's just what I say. But, uh, trying to be, uh, transparent with the citizens, my constituents, their tax dollars, and I, we have had, and our mayor served on it as well, as a finance committee, um, with the community, and they did have experience. I think we accepted, um, letters of recommendation of their experience. So to serve on that board, still being transparent, I still think that we should at least have a couple of members from the, from the community. Because as a board, we have nothing to hide. We don't want black eyes, we wanna continue to go forward. And again, as I state, it is the taxpayer dollars money that keeps us afloat, that keeps our jobs, and it's who we work for, our constituents. So I still would like to see, uh, at least a couple of citizens with experience, 'cause we've had it before, and the mayor served on that board, and to say they did an excellent job. The DA was, uh, pleased about it as well.
That was the, uh, P Card Review Committee.
Yes, sir. And the citizens were excellent.
I was on that board because I was the new kid on the, on, uh, on the Board of Aldermen. Okay, Alderwoman Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would also like to see, um, a couple of citizens, and, um, I would also like to see an additional, um, staff member, 'cause, you know, they know any types of issues that are going on, um, in, in their department as far as, uh, reporting or whatever. So I'd like to see a staff member and, um, at least a couple of citizens, uh, for transparency and just, uh, for the, more information.
Mayor, typically what you'll have is, staff will be a resource to the committee, but not on the committee. I mean, this is, I mean, really and truly, I think that your, your, your best approach, obviously, you guys make, make the ultimate policy decision. But this is a committee of the Board of Aldermen, I think, is what you're trying to get to. This is not like a parks and recreation committee. Okay, this is regarding the internal operations of the town, and there's a, there's a, there's a distinction with that. This is a board-level committee, as I've seen it before. I think Asheville's probably, you know, uh, you know, kind of a one-on, in terms of how they've done it. But typically what you'll see is, um, you know, it's, it's really a, a subcommittee of the board. And the staff, again, I, I would, uh, suggest that the staff just be a resource to the board. I mean, when, I mean, to the committee, so whenever the committee needs, uh, the committee can request that staff be present, or certain staff, key staff, that would have knowledge. The manager typically is at the audit committee, okay, and the finance director, okay? 'Cause those are the two people that report directly to the Board of Aldermen, I believe. And I, I, I don't know what other staff person at this point that you would want beyond that, but of course, the committee can decide. But, uh, I think the key thing is just understanding that, at, at, at least what I, I'm hearing you say, Mayor, you're looking for, a committee of the board that's responsive to what the LGC said in its letter.
Yeah.
Which is to have an audit committee. And you can have the same responsibilities, but it's really this board that's responsible for the financial affairs of the, uh, of the town. And each one of you individuals that are elected, if there are any deficiencies, you're gonna get that letter from the LGC. And so that's why I think it's probably best to have this, this, uh, board, the, uh, the committee, the subcommittee of the board.
And, and also, if the LGC, LGC suggested, it could be problematic. If they see things that we need, advise us on those things, and then we don't follow through. Uh, not that anybody gonna take any, I mean, hold anything against it, but they will say, well, gee, we, we advise them after five years, no, no changes. Uh, so can we agree, and, and we of course, uh, do all the voting on, on our next meeting, two board members and the finance director as the committee?
Yes, sir, that'll, that'll...
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking the board primarily.
I've made my statement, I think that's what we should do, uh, have citizens as well, uh, that's how I see it. Because we have meetings as board members, we're gonna be meeting, I think, Mr. Gerald, uh, ahead of time for the budget, still a meeting late, so we can get on track of it and we don't get behind the board.
Yes, uh, that's what we'll do, so I'll put together the package for you guys to vote on next meeting.
All down the line, come on, all of you around here, come on, straight down. You didn't? Okay, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Jackson.
I, I am in agreement with, um, what Charlie Charleston said, that we do the committee among the board members.
Okay, so one involves citizens, one, uh, board members, yes, sir?
I mean, I don't really see how, um, I mean, right now we have a audit committee, it consists of six people, the Board of Aldermen and the mayor. I don't see how two pairs of eyes is better than six pairs of eyes looking at the same issue. So it seems to me that such a committee would be a redundancy, so I don't see the point of it whatsoever.
You know, uh, if I could speak to the Ms. Tim, uh, I mean, I see your point, ultimately, the board is responsible, but in real life, that's not how it works. Because if the Board of Aldermen was responsible, you guys would have addressed those audit issues before. Wouldn't it then, uh, you know, that it got to the point that it did? So somewhere along the line, all the, uh, committee of the board, subcommittee of the board does, is does some of the work of, uh, the Board of Aldermen. If you look at any, uh, other cities and towns across the state, you'll see work of the board being done by different groups. One group may do personnel stuff, bring it back to the board to be voted on. Somebody else may deal with, uh, parks and, and greenways and all of that. But it all comes back to the board, and it's presented to the board. You know, in your package, the Board of, uh, the, the audit committee review, the... You know, in your package, the Board of, uh, the, the Audit Committee reviews this and is recommending the following to the board. You still go through the drill, but you just don't have the time to, to deal with all the issues that we've dealt with sufficiently, in my opinion. Uh, because some, so often you get bogged down and stuff, who do you all need? That you don't give it the kind of, the attention, the big things that should be getting attention, don't get attention, because you're bogged down in where the period is, or where the exclamation point is. And so, my thing is, uh, that this doesn't take any authority away from the board at all. The board doesn't, because the board has to approve everything anyway. Because, uh, two people are working on this pretty much exclusively. This is what they do, this is their thing, to make sure that you don't end up where you are. Make sure that Mr. Gerald has enough resources, that you almost become an advocate for, uh, financial governance and oversight that committee does. And comes back, and Mr. Gerald says he needs X. They stand, they vouch for that, because they've met, they've done the homework on it, more so than sometimes you get in a, uh, in a complete board decision. So I don't know that I would agree that it takes away. Uh, I mean, if you think about it, if the Congress as a whole met on everything, whether it was the budget and defense and all that, they haven't given you work done. So, uh, the whole idea here is to, to assign the committee a specific task to do, but it still comes back to the full board with all the support that it has. And basically, I'll bet you, probably twenty times out of, uh, twenty-five, the committee's gonna come back in alignment with management on those issues, because they're gonna have work side by side with management. But they only meet once a quarter or something like that, and come back and report on average. You know, once a quarter, once a month, once every other month, or something like that. But I, you know, I think that it's, uh, it's not unusual, and, uh, and I represent a number of public authorities, and Mayor Protem, they all do the work through committees. I have, they have, they may call it Audit Committee, they may call it a Finance Committee, but they do the same thing. They have Personnel Committees, they have, uh, Governance Committees that, uh, deals with the appointment of its members, and it all gets recommended to the full body.
I mean, I think a body that has hundreds of members and it spans over a great deal of people might need that level of specialization, but I think you're talking about a group of two people, I, I just, I, I don't really see what you get from that.
Alderwoman Cooper. You too, Mayor? Was it?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, there is, um, the School of Government is offering a course, um, this week called fiduciary responsibility of local elected officials, and that might help, um, clear up some of this. I know I'm finding a ticket, so, it's, um, scheduled for October fifteenth, I believe, from ten to twelve, it's, it's virtual, and that might clear up, um, some of this that we're talking about right now.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman Jackson.
I just want to say, if we have to have a committee, and from what I'm hearing, um, the LB is assisting that we have one, so we're trying to look in light of them. So if we have to have one, then, um, I'm agreeing with the committee being of the board members. If it's not a must, then I'm agreeing that we don't have one, because I honestly, truly don't see the purpose of one either. But if we have to have one for it to make us look like we're inclined in doing things right, then I'd go with the membership of the two. Because, I mean, just the problems that we had before was because of the old Finance Director, and it was, if we're gonna be honest, partly our responsibility too, to make sure what he was telling us was correct. We didn't question him when he said it was the hurricane. I mean, I can only speak on this shit, the, the years that I was on there. We didn't question him. We took what he said to be true, when we should have questioned him. So, um, and if we're gonna meet, with the, the meeting's gonna meet quarterly, I don't see how we're gonna find problems quarterly. Because if they're, if they're problems and they're monthly, they're gonna be a backed up, and depending on how long we're gonna have to meet, have to look over the information, have anything, we, we still something to miss up in then too. So I definitely don't want to be, the committee meet quarterly, the committee would have to meet more than that, with, to find out what's, you know, to make sure everything is in decent and in order. So I am agreeing, is if we have to have it, that we do it among the board members, but if we don't have to have it, I don't see the purpose of it.
Well, let, let me, let me respond to it this way. This board has the authority to have any committee that it wants, or not have it. But the reality of it is this, just like when the board recommended, the LGC recommended that, uh, certain actions be taken to strengthen this before, you know, catching stuff up, your, your town manager reacted in a positive way, and then we got a positive reaction from the LGC as well. Okay? And so, it, it's, I think that, you have to understand that Audit Committee is not designed to be the auditor, where it goes and finds. What it does is does certain twenty thousand foot level work. For instance, I think the mayor said that the audit is due in December? Okay, then the Audit Committee meets and asks the question, how are we tracking to get this done? What's it gonna take to get it finished? Why are we, uh, not gonna make it deadline? Or this is great, we're well ahead of schedule, but it's almost like an arms race, and it's just, that's the, that's the function, is doing that. Because quite frankly, unless you're gonna schedule it as a board on your agenda to deal with, you know, how are you gonna know? I mean, you, you, you know, you've mentioned before that you took the word of the former Finance Director, that the work was being done. You know, Walleye Reagan once said, you know, there's no force, trust but verify. And I've been in that professionally myself, where I hired a staff that said they've done something, and I've relied on it, and it wasn't that. Okay, so how do I police that and make sure that we're there? And I think the, you know, one most important function you have is financial governance, right? Financial oversight. I mean, that's what, you know, it's kind of get called in on, it's what this is about. And so, uh, you know, so, I, I think that having something like that, uh, just based on my experiences as a board representative of the, of the government, is, uh, is a good thing to have. And if you all get through it inside, and that makes any sense, then there's nothing to say, you can't say, well, this works better as a committee of all. And you're out of it. And the, and the different thing about it, it's not the full board that's being burdened with it. It will be the two people that the board, or whoever's the point in person would designate, that would have the time and the familiarity and understanding to, to deal with those issues. You can work with anything, reporting back to your colleagues on the board, and that's it. So you can meet as often as you, as you think is appropriate. I was just saying, I was saying, you know, some need quarters, some need months, some need every other month. It's just whatever the, you know, the committee decides in the, in its, uh, committee bylaws in terms of, you know, what it wants to do. I mean, the board would approve all of that, obviously, but, uh, just something to think about, I think that, uh, the LGC has forecast to have Spring Lake what it would like to be. And, but this, within this board's authority discretion to do those things about.
Uh, two, two things, and I think I'll be finished. Uh, Alderwoman Cooper, could you text or email all of us the link to this session? It's on the fifteenth. Uh, I'm hoping that we can all watch and listen, get something from.
You got to register and pay.
We have to register when?
You have to register and pay.
And I, I'll register, so I'll have a better understanding.
I'll register.
Okay? Okay? And then the other thing was, I, I heard Attorney Charleston say that he would get with Mr. Gerald, and they will formulate a plan, and I think it will be based on these eight things of the overview here, and then come back to him. And, and that will give, because I'm, I believe they have listened to what we say in it, will come up with a workable solution. And of course, the board will, uh, receive it all, or not receive. I mean, how, how about that, as our path forward? Alderwoman Cooper.
Yes, um, if we do, uh, go forward with this, I would also like to suggest that Mayor Davins be on the committee, um, because he did all that work when we had the P Card issue, and, and like everybody said, they did a excellent job. We have, um, the DA was very pleased, and the, um, the, uh, state auditor, so I would love for Mayor Davins to also participate in that. If that's, uh, agreeable and, and, and appropriate.
Okay, so we will look forward to taking this, this matter up at the next meeting. All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we're moving right along. Uh, item, uh, six C, uh, Mr. Charleston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Bamba is gonna present that.
Good evening, Mayor. Board members.
Good evening.
I'll keep this. Thank you.
Before you start, Bernard, can you make sure that the public is able to, to see Ms. Bamba, you know, back?
Gotcha.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
All right, this item is a discussion item. There is no action needed today, so please disregard that on the agenda memo. Um, what is going on in this item is that, uh, you have a site plan, looks like this, in your packet. This is the Village on the Lakes Apartments' site plan. And up here in this northwest quadrant, it's, it's a little hard to see, but up here, there's a, a box, so about a one acre parcel of land. The town owns a well easement on that one acre. Um, the well easement was granted back in the nineteen eighties. This whole tract has water and sewer going to it. So the well easement isn't needed anymore. Village on the Lakes would like to add buildings over here, um, however, they can't do that with the well easement. So they have requested that we terminate it because, uh, it's no longer needed. So the other documents in your packet are the existing easement deed, and then a draft of the termination. Uh, we are currently go, uh, speaking with the other side's attorney on language form, and we will come back at the next meeting with final drafts, but we wanted to bring this to your attention ahead of that meeting. So if you have any questions.
Alderwoman Cooper then, Alderwoman Sutherland.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, will they, uh, when we request this easement, will they be asking for any types of monies in exchange for it? Will this cost us anything?
No, no. So we have, the town has the easement now. What they are asking is that you release the easement. Um, so the town will not be paying any money. In fact, the town will be getting, um, compensation for releasing that easement and freeing up your rights on that one acre.
Do we know what the amount of money is, or have they stated?
Yes, and we'll have that, we'll have the form also, but, um, at the next meeting, but it's just under twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Uh-oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Sutherland.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there's no actions needed, is what I was wondering, because the, the termination release, uh, easement that you have in here, then I was looking at the preparation date, uh, the preparation, but there's no dates or anything in here, so we'll, and, uh, says Ms. Hudson also, needs to be notarized and all that stuff, but it's all blank.
Correct.
So you're bringing it, so my question is, when will this be presented to the other attorney?
It has already been presented. We are waiting on, on, uh, comments back. Um, they are generally in agreement with it, but they know it will be, that they will need to have, um, final comments, and we will have a final termination and release of easement at the next fourth meeting.
Right, that was my question, the final one, was anybody to speak for or against, uh, the easement since the apartment is, we've had it since nineteen eighty. You know, I was just wondering. So I guess the next documentation that we receive, it will be more understanding of what you're speaking about, that they no longer need it, and then the town will be compensated for it. So it will be documentation saying that, so we can keep those in our minutes as well, because you're gonna need action on the next one. It's just, when you bring it back.
Right, but they, correct, but they, it's not that they no longer need it, it's that the town no longer needs the easement. So the town had the easement to drill a well for water. Um, the town has now put in water and sewer, if I'm correct, in that property. That whole, it's, it's a built apartment complex.
Is it right over here?
I, you know, I'm not sure, but it is called Village on the Lakes.
Two ten. Oh, two ten, yeah, yeah.
And, and, and Ms. Sutherland, you, you won't see any other, uh, documentation, just the release, uh, from the town? The whole idea is this is being brought tonight to, as a discussion item, just to tell you what's gonna be coming back.
Yeah, I'd just like to understand more, because if not, I'm just in the blind, just approving stuff, and I just like to educate myself, so I like to read and find out a little bit more, that's why when I read the termination and release of the easement, to educate myself so I understand a little bit more. I just don't like it being in the blind, in future reference, somebody asks me about it, and I don't even know what they're talking about, because I haven't, it's just no documentation supporting anything.
Right, and so with the release deed, it's like if you have a mortgage on your house and you pay it off, the board, the bank will give you a release of the mortgage, so that you're free and clear. In this particular case, the town was granted an easement, which was just a right to drill a well on that certain piece of property. You paid for that easement. Well, now the town has water and sewer, and the town no longer needs that easement, so the town is negotiating, has negotiated with the developer, the property owner, to give them a release. In other words, okay, the right that I have to drill on that property, I'm gonna give it back, I'm gonna relinquish it and give it back to you, but you give me X amount of dollars for that.
All right, it's, it's no different than one, you know, I was just working on one for a school, that, uh, it said you want to put a bus stop near, uh, University.
Yeah, I understand that, let me answer your question according to what I'm reading, I, I know that, but, uh, according to where it says, where is Wallace C. Murchison? And then it says, where is the gardener guy, the LLC? So, are, who are they?
Okay, the, initially, Wallace C. Murchison, et al, just means, and everybody else that was associated with him, gave the town of Spring Lake an easement to come onto their property to drill for water, to drill a well. Okay, Wallace C. Murchison and et al. doesn't own the property anymore, uh, Kakonat Gardens on the Lake LLC, and, uh, Grigenci Realty are the current owners now.
Okay.
That's just, this whole idea was just to give you a history. And so, it says here, where's the owners, that's Kakonat Gardens and Grigenci Real Estate, Realty, they have access to municipal water, and therefore, the town and these owners agree that that easement is no longer necessary. Okay? And so, and that the town should terminate the easement and release their rights and claims for that easement.
Yeah, that's what I hear.
That's what this whole thing is.
All right.
And so we just brought it before tonight to talk about it. It might very well just be on the consent agenda next month, because the only thing that we're gonna change is we're gonna fill in the dates and tell you what the consideration being paid to the town is.
All right, that's what I see, what it means by that, okay. All right, that's what I see what it means by that, okay.
But it'll be on the agenda for next, the next regular meeting on the town.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item six D, Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Uh, I have before you tonight, um, you see, you may see it as an action item, but it's not. It's just for, um, the edification of the board and probably a consent item on next board. But I am just going for it with eliminating trick or treating hours for the town of Spring Lake due to COVID-nineteen. I know typically it has been a big deal to set the trick or treating hours at a board meeting here. Probably Ms. Sutherland knows well of that. Um, but in light of the COVID and our elderly population and other populations that may be at risk, uh, we're just moving forward with not having trick or treat hours this year.
Alderwama Cooper?
Thank you. Uh, are we going to put it out there to encourage people not to turn their lights on? Um, you know, so that, uh, children who may have taken it upon themselves to go and look, and searching for candy, uh, aren't encouraged in that way?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
So with trick or treating, um, it's an activity that's done outside. People socially distance. Everyone obligatorily wears a mask, uh, that is the holiday itself. They go door to door, they stay outside, people hand them candy and, and they walk away. And this is mostly being done by people who are themselves willingly doing this, right? They, they themselves are choosing whether or not to give candy to trick or treaters.
Yes.
So, should, is this really an area where the government should regulate it?
Well, well, typically, um, that's a good question. We don't really regulate it, but it has always been a tradition here at the town to set trick or treating hours. We're just not encouraging it because my research still show trick or treating as a possible super spreader event. So in light of that information, we're just not encouraging the trick or treating. Uh, next year, I'm pretty, pretty sure we'll be full boards setting the trick or treating hours. But yes, they do wear masks, but you may touch candy that possibly be, could be contaminated. And then, you know, little kids are gonna always be accompanied with somebody and it's hard to, you know, keep spacing with little kids and things of that nature. So, um, just, just to err on the side of caution, um, I am moving forward with that, or at least that's what I want to do. With not encouraging trick or treating.
Alderwama Jackson and then Alderwama Sutherland? Hmm, oh, okay. Alderwama Sutherland and then Alderwama Cooper?
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Gerald. Uh, listening to the media, it is up to local government to make a discussion and to say that a lot of municipalities has canceled it altogether because of the social discord and everything that you stated. So I won't have to go back and state it. So I kinda agree with you with it being this year, the unknowns that we're looking out for the citizens and our children as well. So again, thank you for bringing that to the board. Uh, so thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, Ald, Alderwama?
Um, I did fail to mention, um, it's not on Halloween, but I am, um, partnering with FSU Cares on October thirtieth with, um, Cricket and some other people. And we'll be giving out candy, we'll be giving out, um, free PPE. And, um, we'll also have an ice cream truck, uh, available for two hours for people to come in, order ice cream. Uh, so we'll be doing COVID testing, census and voter registration. So the kids can come by and pick up a bag of candy as well.
It's drive up?
It's, it's drive up. It's, it's all drive up, yes.
And that's on the thirtieth?
It's on October thirtieth from four to seven and four to seven, yes.
And typically those activities are generated by nonprofits and collectible drive.
Well, Cricket is, uh, assisting us with, um, getting candy.
Who's that?
Cricket is assisting us with getting candy.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Uh, that brings us to item seven. Mayor Pro Tem?
I move that we adjourn?
Alderwama Jackson?
I second that motion.
It has been moved to second that we adjourn. You first motion, are you ready for the question? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay.